Good evening and welcome to the candidates debate for the Wakefield Town Council for the upcoming election on April 26. I'm Bill Carroll. I'll be moderating the debate this evening. With me are Mark Sardella and Bob Burgess from the Wakefield Daily Item. They'll be asking questions of the candidates. There are three seats open, each for a three-year term, and four candidates looking for your vote. This evening, we have Jonathan Chines, Katie Dolan, who is remote because it's school vacation week, and Mike McLean and Bob Vincent. There'll be no opening statements this evening's debate. Questions will be asked by one of the panelists. The candidate will have two minutes to respond to the question, and then every other candidate will have a one-minute follow-up to that question. To allow for as many questions as needed, I'm going to have to cut some people off and keep things in line, if you will, to do that. Questions have not been provided ahead of time, and at the end, each candidate will be provided two minutes to give a closing statement. I think we'll kick things off with Mark Sardella has a question for Jonathan Chines.
Okay. Wakefield has about $8 million in federal ARPA funds. Town Administrator Mayo has outlined a general plan for spending those funds. What are your thoughts on prioritizing how those funds should be spent?
Thank you, Mark, and thank you, Bill, and Bob, and everyone at WCAT for hosting tonight. You know, it is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to have the money that we have available through ARPA for the town of Wakefield. It's rare that you have funds contributed to the town that allow you to do things that are innovative and different and exciting, and that's really the opportunity that we face today. As I think about how we use the funds, I think there are a couple of things that, for me, are top priorities. One is making sure that we are using the funding to help continue to provide preparedness support for Wakefield. You know, we are not necessarily out of the woods of COVID yet, unfortunately. We are seeing numbers tick up again. We certainly hope that we don't see another surge like we did with Omicron, but, you know, we still may have COVID-related expenses that, as a town, we've got to face, and so that's one priority for the funds that we're getting through through ARPA. A second is to support small business recovery. You know, we had, fortunately, a lot of our businesses fare fairly well through the pandemic, thanks to the community and thanks to all the support that they had from residents in Wakefield. But, you know, we need to help kind of get over it, over the other side. We need to help those businesses make sure that they're positioned for the future, and so that's a secondary area of focus for me. Making sure that we can support them through things like facade improvements and other business improvements, making sure we can support them through recruitment and training of employees, things like that, to help our businesses get back on their feet and return stronger than ever. And I think a final area of focus for me is supporting some of the infrastructure in town. You know, both improvements that we need to make to areas where we've seen deficiencies, such as our sidewalks and improving the sidewalk network. I'd also like to see us invest in infrastructure around some of our open spaces, and probably the biggest priority for me there is Lake Quanapawid. I think we have a real opportunity to improve the pathway around the lake. I would actually love to see a full lakeside path that runs along the shoreline on the west side of the lake, something that we haven't done, and so that's something that I'd like to see us explore with the ARPA funds.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, one minute.
Since I have only one minute, let me focus perhaps more on infrastructure, Mark. The $5 million that we have that the town administrator has indicated should go for infrastructure. On that item, we have had a need, a longstanding need, that has not been met for affordable senior housing. And at one of our recent meetings, I did ask, you know, do we have any town buildings that we might already have that we own, such as, for example, the old school? And I was told, well, that's rented, and I understand that. I know we rent the buildings that we have for the extra income. I don't have a problem with that. But I'm thinking if we have an existing structure that could be modified, perhaps a portion of that $5 million could go for a unmet need in terms of affordable senior housing. Now, I don't think it should be overstudied either. I think we should get to it, and that's my hope.
Thank you. Bob?
Thank you for the question. I noted that we are slotted to get $8 million in ARPA funding, and I believe that the town administrator, when he briefed the town council, indicated perhaps $5.5 million of that being used for infrastructure. Having just spent the last month walking through all seven precincts and visiting 1,000 homes in the town, I can tell you that every precinct needs a lot of work, not just on roads and sidewalks, but I think sometimes we also forget what's underneath the ground. We have to be aware of sewer lines, water lines, things like that are also part of the infrastructure package. I also think another thing that we ought to consider using the money on is for some mental health services, especially for our children as we emerge from the pandemic. I am someone that was stationed just outside the Pentagon on 9/11 and had to go back and work in the Pentagon immediately after 9/11, and I can tell you, last year, being the 20th anniversary of 9/11, a lot of times, the experiences that you have come back, and we need to be mindful of taking care of our children as we recover from the pandemic.
Thank you. Katie?
Thank you, and thank you to everybody for allowing me to participate remotely tonight. So I would say for the ARPA funds, like Jonathan said, this is really, hopefully, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, because hopefully, we won't experience another pandemic like that. But I do think that the biggest thing the funds could be utilized for would be infrastructure improvements with that, our roads, sidewalks, and so forth. When I've studied kind of what the ARPA funds can be slotted for, the one that immediately stood out to me was definitely the infrastructure piece. I would also like to see some of it going towards preparedness for a pandemic, you know, continuing to come out of this pandemic, but also any other, you know, disasters, so to speak, that we might need to utilize funding for, and what the town could do to prepare itself for those kinds of situations.
Thank you. All right. Next question is Bob to Mike.
Mike, what is the most important issue currently facing the town council?
The most important issue? As you know, Bob, we have a number of issues active before the town council. I think that the single biggest issue right now, though, is development and overdevelopment and how we potentially, you know, deal with that. And that's not just the town council, obviously. There are other boards involved. You know, we have just recently reappointed a couple of individuals to the ZBA. We had some other good people that we couldn't get to, and Vice Chair Butt had a very good idea that those folks, hopefully, can apply for the bylaws committee and perhaps, you know, continue to be involved, and I hope to reach out to them individually directly. As you know, as you may know, Bob, I did raise this in the special election, my concern about overbuilding. I think the most important thing is what we need to do is we need to get back to revising our zoning, and I did participate, and Jonathan was in the breakout room with me at the land use portion of the last meeting. And, you know, that's all well and good, but if we have a bylaws committee every couple of years, and then it takes a couple more years to get beyond that, to get actually to something, I would like to see the town do whatever it can to speed up a rewrite of the zoning bylaws so that we know where we're going. We've had a lot of growth, a lot of new growth, a lot of tall growth that I've commented on, and I would just like to see the town, for traffic reasons and for lifestyle reasons, perhaps slow it down a bit, and the quicker we get to actual zoning changes, I think, the better.
Thank you. Bob, one minute.
Thank you very much. I would concur with zoning bylaws. Very quickly, the zoning bylaws were codified at town meeting in 1997. Although the town charter says that every year that ends in a 2 and a 7, the town council was supposed to appoint a bylaw review committee to look at all the town's bylaws, I can tell you from my research, the '02, the '07, the 2012, and the 2017 bylaw review committee, which I sat on, did not look at zoning bylaws. There's a reason for that. You can't ask seven citizens or nine citizens to look at zoning when they're not subject matter experts. We need to hire a zoning consultant to give advice to the bylaw review committee, and of course, this is the year 2022, to look at zoning bylaws. We're also in year two of our tenure master plan. The master plan is for 2030. We have the advantage that we have the year 2022 and the year 2027 to have a bylaw review committee look at zoning bylaws. And a bylaw review committee normally lasts for two to three years, so for most of the period that we have left for the master plan, we can have a bylaw review committee looking at zoning bylaws.
Thank you. Katie?
So I'm going to agree that development is a major issue that's facing the town council. However, I'm going to put my own kind of spin on it and say that it's also the communication to the public about the development that's going on around town. You can check in on any Facebook group, any area where there's a lot of citizens gathered, and people are going to be talking about how they feel there's too much development, they don't like the way, you know, the buildings are too tall, or the way that they're looking. And I think that people would maybe feel a little bit better if they understood a little bit more about the process and how those things are coming to be. You can't just come in and build a building, you know, any way you want. There's a process that needs to be followed, and I think it would really be helpful for residents to be a little bit more informed and under getting the number to our 10% of affordable housing. If we could get that information more accessible to residents, I think it would be really helpful.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. You know, certainly, I think the process that we have underway to update the master plan, and as Bob mentioned, to sort of look at our zoning bylaws, is an important piece. But, you know, as we often deal with in town council, there's never a single important issue that we've got to work on. There are multiple, and so for me, you know, one area of focus that's really critical is making sure we're investing back in the town. We've had some discussion already about infrastructure. We've put some money into our roads. We need to make sure that that money goes to making substantial improvements to our roads. I mentioned sidewalks as one area of opportunity and one area of focus that we've got to spend some time and money on, and also moving ahead with the new high school and making sure that we do get to a place where that feasibility study is completed and we break ground on a new building. Those are the things that, for me, I think rise to the top of the list in terms of priorities.
Thank you. All right. Mark, oh, you started, right? Question to Bob. Mark, question to Bob.
Do you think Wakefield needs a town planner?
That's a very interesting question, because I watched the town meeting that took place a number of weeks ago, and I noticed that the planning board and the zoning board of appeals indicated that we didn't need a town planner. I know we got a community and economic development person a few years ago who was supposed to augment what was being done by the town planner, and then the town planner retired. I haven't explored this enough, but I kind of, right now, agree with Councilwoman Dennehy, who looked at the possibility of getting a town planner and seems to be the major proponent of that, but I would put a little twist on that and say that perhaps we could get a town planner that we could share with another town. I know that we have limited size in our town, so therefore, maybe we don't have enough for a town planner to be employed full-time, but I think we could explore the possibility and feasibility of getting a town planner that we would share with another town of comparable size.
Yes, I absolutely think that we need a town planner. I think that with these major issues that we're facing, the top of everyone's mind is about some of these infrastructure things, about some of this development, and a town planner could really, to guide us in that area. And while we have a great ZBA and, you know, planning board, we really need somebody to kind of be in that town planner role, to be running all of these things and giving us their educated and honest opinion about where we should be going and helping with that. So yes, absolutely.
Jonathan?
Thank you. You know, I think we need a town planning function. I'm not prepared to say yet if that is an individual that's hired full-time, if that's a shared resource, if that's something where we hire on a part-time basis. We, you know, when we talked about this in the town council a couple of meetings ago, we did task Councilor Dennehy and Councilor Butt to work with some of the stakeholders in town to come up with a proposal around specifically, what would we want to see in a town planner position? What's the nature of the position? What's the job description? And I think that's the right approach. You know, anytime we're adding resources at town hall, we've got to be careful about how we do that. We want to be, you know, thorough stewards of taxpayer dollars, and so I look forward to seeing sort of the results of that and figuring out how we can fill what I think is an important need, but fill it in a way that is responsible and reactive to our obligations to steward the taxpayer dollars effectively.
Mike?
Just a minor correction on what my friend Bob said. I think there was some discussion by the planning board and the ZBA at our meeting, and I think that there was some discussion of perhaps needing possibly a half, you know, full-time equivalent as a planner. I am supportive of having a town planner. It's not just Councilor Dennehy. As talented as, and I believe, you know, as well thought of as our economic development coordinator is, she's tasked with, for example, keeping the 40B list for the ZBA. She's doing all kinds of different functions, and, you know, those functions are not necessarily town planning functions. So I would be supportive, and I'll agree with Jonathan. We would have to look at it, whether we can get, you know, whether it would be enough to have a shared planner with another community, but I'm not ready to say that we don't need a town planner. I think we do need that function.
Okay. Bob, your question to Katie.
Katie, does the town need a new high school, and why?
Yes, the town needs a new high school. So in the interest of full disclosure, I do teach for Wakefield Public. I teach at the Doyle Early Transit Center, but yes, I absolutely see the need for a new high school. As people have mentioned about other topics, this needs to be done thoughtfully, and it needs to be done purposely, so as to minimize impact to, you know, the neighborhoods around there, but also to give our students what they really need for a 21st century education. Our students are going from the Galvin Middle School, which was redone in an incredible way, onto an older high school. They should be going on to a high school that's meeting their academic needs. You know, the most important thing in a school is the students, and we want to meet their needs. We know that the last niacin accreditation was a little bit, you know, we got dinged a little bit for the state of our high school, and that really, to me, is kind of the wake-up call that we need to really buckle down and focus on this and build for the future, build for increased enrollment, if that's what we need, and make sure that we're preparing our students for the future, whatever that might look like.
Thank you. Not unlike the school committee debate, this is sort of a big-ticket issue, so two minutes for everybody, okay? Jonathan?
Thank you. So my answer to that question is absolutely, we do need a new high school, and Katie did a very nice job of summarizing some of the reasons why. The building has issues related to accessibility. It has issues related to the structural elements of the building. It's also not designed for a 21st century education, and one of the things, you know, having four children in the Wakefield Public Schools, one of the things that I've come to appreciate is the way that we teach students these days is a lot different than it was when most of us were going to school, and the way that students interact during the school day is a lot different. It requires different kinds of spaces. You know, I am fortunate to serve on the school building committee as the town council's representative, because this is an area that is of special interest of mine. We followed a really thorough process going through the feasibility study with the Mass School Building Authority so far. We started with 11 options, have narrowed, had narrowed that down to three to submit to the state back in February, and just about a week and a half ago, voted to move forward with one preferred option to build a new school on the site where Beasley Oval is today. I'm really excited about this option. I think it gives us a tremendous opportunity to create a school that is going to meet our needs for decades to come. I think it's going to give us an option to build a building that the town will be proud of and that folks, not just kids who are attending the high school, but all residents can leverage, whether you're talking about the athletic facilities or the performing arts facilities that that school will include. And I think it will be something that will be worthy of the excellent education that our teachers provide today. So I'm fully supportive of moving ahead. We have a lot of work left to do. You know, we've narrowed down to an option. That option has not been designed yet, and so there is a lot of work ahead, and obviously a lot of work ahead to bring this to the public, you know, gather feedback from residents and make sure that we come up with something that they can ultimately support, but I'm very excited to keep working on this over the course of the next, over the course of the next year.
Thank you. Mike?
I'm going to concur with Katie and Jonathan. I agree that we need a new high school in Wakefield. I think everybody, at least over at your table, may recall my last debate, which was probably 20 years ago for school committee, and at that time, I was asked whether we, I was one of four candidates that was able, willing to say, we needed a debt exclusion to rebuild the Galvin. If we had done that at that time, with a little more state participation, I think the numbers changed, that building might be getting closer to being paid as we reach this next new school building that we very much need. I'm already talking to people, and I'm hearing what we're going to hear, arguments relative to why don't we take care of those old buildings? And I get it, but we just had the school superintendent in front of the town council, and he talked about all the maintenance costs that we are spending. We are taking care of our old buildings. The problem is that sometimes you outgrow them. Sometimes your educational needs outgrow them, and that is the, and sometimes you, they out, just get old. And, you know, people were talking about the new high school when I ran for school committee 20 years ago, and here we are, we're talking about it again, and I hope this time, you know, we get it through, and I'm hoping that Jonathan can also get me an indoor track that I can run on.
Bob?
I think I'm in a somewhat unique position, because back in February of 2019, I actually volunteered my time to help write, redraft the statement of interest, the 2019 statement of interest that was successful to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. I took an interest in that when I ran for school committee in 2018. What happened is, in 2011, the accreditation people first started noticing problems with the high school. From 2016 to 2018, we submitted a statement of interest application that was denied. In November of 2018, the accreditation people downgraded the high school from probation to warning status. Immediately after that, in December 2018, the Massachusetts School Building Authority denied our 2018 application. Time was clearly of the essence since our accreditation entity has been downgraded, and I volunteered my time to go through all of the accreditation reports, all the architectural and engineering studies that had been done in 2016, all of the prior statement of interest, and I can tell you with 100% certainty that if I looked at all that documentation and I determined that we did not need a new high school, that is exactly what I would have told the superintendent of schools, the town council, and the school committee, who trusted me with this undertaking. The other thing I think is very significant to note, it is extremely difficult to get into the core program for the Massachusetts School Building Authority. It is about an 18% acceptance rate. If the Massachusetts School Building Authority determined that we didn't need a new high school, we would not have been accepted into the core program. They may have told us to go to the accelerated repair program, which is how the new roof was put over the Greenwood Elementary School. They didn't do that, and they didn't turn us down. I think that is a determinative factor, that the state organization that provides millions of dollars of funds said this was necessary.
Thank you. Now, where are we? Mark to Jonathan, back at the top, right?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Mark's to Jonathan.
Should Wakefield use public monies to fund free MBTA bus service?
So I have to say, one of the things that has been a frustration for me over the course of my three years on the council has been the lack of service from the MBTA to our community. You know, we spend a few hundred thousand dollars a year just for the privilege of having the commuter rail and bus lines run through Wakefield, and during that time, we've seen service cut, we've seen fares increase, and we've ultimately seen the MBTA put together a product that doesn't meet the needs of our community. And so as I look at one of my roles as a town councillor, it is to advocate for our community with the MBTA for all of the issues that are important to us, and that includes a number of things. One is making sure that we still have adequate service. I was one of the folks, along with our legislative delegation, to testify in front of the MBTA about a year ago, when they were threatening to cut service, including evening and weekend service on the commuter rail, and to consolidate our bus lines and eliminate, actually, our bus lines. That includes making sure that we continue to advocate for accessible commuter rail stations, both in Wakefield Center and also Greenwood, something that the MBTA has not funded and something that, quite frankly, I think they've sandbagged us a little bit as a community in terms of making those commitments. And it does include looking at different ways in which we can make public transportation more accessible, including potentially looking at freer reduced fares. The challenge right now is that we don't even have the flexibility to have that conversation. We don't even have the option to think about that with the MBTA. It's just not on the table based on what the MBTA has put forward in terms of their programs. I would love to see the MBTA offer more flexibility, so as a town council, we can have a conversation about what makes sense for our community and are there ways that we can help people, you know, meet the transportation challenges that so many of our residents have. If that includes doing a pilot that involves freer reduced bus fare, I think that's something that's worth trying, and I think that's something that we could potentially learn a lot about and something that we can use to continue to advocate with the MBTA for better service for Wakefield going forward.
Thank you. Mike, one minute?
Yeah, could you repeat the question quickly, Mark, please?
Should Wakefield use public monies to fund free MBTA bus service?
Not in my opinion. There's only so much that we can do with a budget, and I don't think that Wakefield funding bus service would be, I'm a pragmatist, and I just don't think it would be on the top list of my priorities.
Thank you. Bob?
One of the things that you're always going to get from me is that if I don't know an answer to a question, and I haven't researched it and thought of it enough to come up with an informed opinion, then I'm not going to render one. So my answer to you, Mr. Sardella, would be that I have not had the requisite time to research that issue, so therefore, I cannot give you an opinion as to whether we should or not, but I can assure you, if I get elected to town council, that is something that I would thoroughly research.
Thank you. Katie?
Yes, I would say no, that I do not think that Wakefield should use public money to fund free MBTA bus service. As Jonathan alluded to, for a variety of reasons, including the lack of, you know, reliability of the MBTA sometimes, the service cuts, I don't think that enough Wakefield residents are utilizing it or really in need of it at this time that it would make sense to put that money towards funding free MBTA bus service. I just don't see it as a top priority, so to speak, and one that would, I don't think that money would really bring in the benefit, that maybe some people might think so if it was used in that way. So, so no, not unless there was a lot of changes or something different was happening.
Okay. All right. Bob to Mike, I believe, correct? Yeah.
Mike, do you think Wakefield is overdeveloped? And if so, what should be done to address it?
I feel like I'm circling back a little bit on that question, Bob, because I've indicated that I do think we've overdeveloped. And what I think should be done is that we embark as quickly as we possibly can on extensive zoning study and changes so that we know where we're going in the future. Whether you're talking, and I understand, whether you're talking about Vision 2020, 2030, Vision 5000, you know, not everybody's going to have the same vision. But as far as I'm concerned, this is a more immediate need. We really need to take care of the traffic issues and take care of the overbuilding as soon as we can, not further studies. That's, that's, just a repeat of what I said earlier, really.
Bob, one minute?
I know that there's strong opinions in town about residential development. What I will share is that we need to have more people involved at town meeting because that is where these decisions are made. In 2015, there was a change to zoning bylaw 190-32, multifamily dwellings, mixed-use development. By a vote of 123 to 41, this bylaw was amended by adding language designed to encourage the development of multifamily dwellings and mixed-use projects. I'm not opining whether that was a good decision or not. It seems to me that we should have controlled growth. But what I tell people when I was out campaigning in, over the last two months, is that town meeting is where these decisions are made. And when you have that few people show up, that is the equivalent of two U.S. senators out of 100, or six or seven congressmen out of 435, making decisions for the, for the entire legislative body.
Thank you. Katie?
I would not say that Wakefield is overdeveloped. I feel like the word "overdeveloped" has a really negative connotation, and so I would not want to use that word to describe what's going on in Wakefield. Yes, there has been a lot of development, there has been a lot of growth. And as, you know, we've all touched on previously, we want to find a way to make sure that going forward, this growth is done in a thoughtful and productive manner. So again, circling back to, you know, reviewing bylaws, absolutely, working with property owners, working with, you know, the people that are developing their land, to work with the ZBAs, to work, you know, all of those boards and committees and make sure that it's done in a thoughtful way that's going to be mutually beneficial for both the town and for the property owners. But no, I would not use the word "overdeveloped."
Thank you. Jonathan?
Thank you. So, you know, this is one of the reasons that I spearheaded the Vision 2030 effort. You know, I think that there is a lot of noise around development, you know, certainly on social media and other aspects. And I think there are pros and cons of the approach that we've taken so far. And the purpose of, the purpose of Vision 2030 was to really try to get to a place where we could distill what are the shared values and what are the shared visions that people have. And there are some things that we know that came out of that that I think will be really informative for the master plan. One is that we want to make sure we're doubling down on protecting our natural resources, including the lake. And so I think that's something, whether it's in a lake overlay district or something else related to the lake, that we should be looking at. A second is that we really haven't focused enough on affordability. I'll give you an example. Near, near me, there's a subdivision that came into being, beautiful homes, but they're selling for $1.6 million. We really need to come up with a better way of making sure that we support young families moving into Wakefield, working people, and seniors who want to stay here. And I hope that that's part of the discussion with the master plan.
Thank you. Thank you. Mark, question to Bob.
Incumbent members of the zoning board of appeals are now being interviewed by a subcommittee of the town council before being reappointed. Is this a good idea, and do you think this should be the case for all other boards that the town council oversees?
Well, I do think that the town council has discretion to interview prospective folks for boards, committees, and commissions. And the town council should, should and is actively exploring their authority on how they want to decide to appoint people to boards. You know, it's Massachusetts state law that zoning board members are appointed. But under the town charter, the town council has a lot of discretion to decide how they want to exercise appointing people to the board. I think that what the town council has done recently in deciding that they want to interview or start an interview process seems to be an appropriate step. If the town council desires to do that with, with, with other boards as well, where you need certain subject matter type experts. And as I alluded to before, when I talked about the bylaws review committee, which I sat on, we weren't subject matter experts in zoning laws. So we were, we're not able to undertake looking at those things. To have people volunteer to sit on the zoning board of appeals, I can understand the need to have a wide cross-section of subject matter experts in different areas, engineering, law, architecture, and whatnot, to serve on that because of the importance and the significant responsibility that the zoning board of appeals has.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Katie?
Can you repeat the question for me? I'm sorry.
Sure. Incumbent members of the zoning board of appeals are currently being interviewed by a subcommittee of the town council before being reappointed. Is this a good idea, and do you think this process should be the case for all other boards that the town council oversees?
Thank you. So I think that members of the ZBA should be appointed through the same process that's used for all of the other town boards, which, having served on other town boards, you typically submit a letter, a resume for the town council to review. I think that for the ZBA, I think that would be sufficient in order to do, to do that, similarly to how we do all the other boards. If perhaps there are questions, maybe then town councillors would have to, to move to an interview. But as a, as a typical standard, I do not think that the interview process is necessary. I think, as others have said, people who have experience in law, who have experience in construction, engineering would be good candidates for the ZBA. And the ZBA is very, very important for it. They, they do wield a significant amount of power, and, and it's very, very important work. So we want to make sure we have the best people, but I think that can be done through, through the resume or, or cover letter process.
Thank you. Jonathan?
You know, I think this is an area where I'd like to spend more time in the town council thinking about the appointment process, not just for the ZBA, but for other boards. You know, this is the first year we've done sort of formal interviews for the ZBA. I have not had a chance to kind of sit down with the town council chair, the ZBA chair, or our community and economic development director to get their feedback on how the process went, or, or the other candidates. I think I'd, I'd like to see us maybe have some open discussions around that. And also, an open discussion as to what are the standards for when and if the town council interviews for different positions. I don't think it needs to happen for every board. Certain boards obviously have more adjudicatory authority, which to me does suggest a different standard for the level of, of review that we do. But I think it's something that we should spend some time in the town council thinking about well in advance of the next appointment cycle that opens up next spring.
Mike?
Mark, at the risk of incurring the ire of a certain local newspaper, I remember reading an article that indicated that this was something tantamount to a senate hearing. Must have been a slow news day. I didn't, it wasn't my idea. I think the council has the power to do it. But I really don't think that an interview committee composed of the town administrator, Steve Mayo, the chair of the town council, and the designee, who was Chip Tarbell, had anybody particularly intimidated in that process. But I agree with Jonathan, I'd like to think about this more. And I'd like to consider whether maybe the whole council would be better off doing an interview, whether that would be more open. I think it's a work in progress. Wasn't my idea. I think the town council had the authority to make the change. I didn't think it was a big deal.
Okay. We have just about 10 minutes left, and you all, we need eight for closings. So I think we're going to start with Jonathan to do his closing, okay? So...
Well, thank you much, very much, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Sardella, Mr. Burgess, for, for the thoughtful questions. To Katie, Bob, and Mike, thank you for the great discussion today. Certainly appreciate sharing the stage. And also, thank you to WCAT as well for hosting this. This is a lot of work, and as always, WCAT does a great job. You know, serving on the Wakefield Town Council for the last three years has been a tremendous honor, and I'm really proud of what we've accomplished together. We've improved livability in Wakefield by securing passage of Wakefield senior property tax exemption, and by hiring a community and economic development director who's helped secure millions of dollars of COVID relief funds for our businesses. We've promoted openness and good government by completing Vision 2030, a community-wide initiative to develop a vision statement for Wakefield that will guide policy decisions for years to come. Additionally, I've posted summaries of all our town council meetings online and held monthly office hours to make sure that I'm open to residents. And finally, we've invested in Wakefield's future by launching a feasibility study for a new high school, and by embarking on a strategic road repair program for our town. We've done all of this while guiding Wakefield through an unprecedented global pandemic and while maintaining our fiscal health. Over the next three years, I'm excited to build on these successes to help secure a future that benefits all of Wakefield's residents. We can continue to improve the quality of life by promoting commercial growth to moderate the property tax burden on Wakefield's homeowners, and by investing in legacy projects that enhance our community, like an enhanced pathway around all of Lake Quanapawett. We can continue to promote openness and good government by assuring that the vision statement we developed as part of Vision 2030 is translated into a new comprehensive master plan for Wakefield that promotes affordability and preserves what we cherish in our community. And we can continue to invest in Wakefield's future by launching construction on a modern high school that meets our students' needs, and by expanding and improving Wakefield's sidewalk network. Thank you, Wakefield, for giving me the opportunity to serve as your town councillor for the last three years. I know that there's much that we can continue to accomplish together. I'm looking forward to the work ahead, and I humbly ask for your vote next Tuesday for reelection. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, WCAT. Thank you, members of the item, for your questions. Thanks, Katie. Thanks, Jonathan. Thanks, Bob. I have been a Wakefield resident and taxpayer at 19 Fairmont Ave for 31 years. I'm a former school committee candidate. I'm an attorney. I'm a CPA. I'm admitted in Massachusetts and Florida. I graduated from Boston College Law School. Go Eagles! Go Celtics! And in the time that I have worked, most of my career has been involved in resolving controversies. That's what I do. It's what I do for a living. And I think that having tried cases in the Massachusetts courts, being a Massachusetts attorney, is one thing that will serve me well in terms of serving the town. I have no political aspirations. I don't seek any higher office. I'm the oldest member on the council right now, and if you elect Bob, my friend Bob, I'll be the oldest member on the council if you elect both of us. I'm 63, and I don't intend to run for a second term. I'm simply in a position where, even though I'm still working 40 hours a week, mostly from home, I take the train on Fridays, I do have some time to give. It's not how much time you have, it's what you do with the time that you have. I was the person that got the 40B list. I was the person that found a building missing on the 40B list. I'm the person that ran for special, in special election, and somehow managed to win. I think that I've done a lot in the last couple of months, and I think, many of you know me, and I will not shy away, however, from a fight. If I see something that I think is wrong, I will bring it to the attention of everyone, and I will seek the facts. Whether people are telling me I shouldn't for political reasons, I don't have any political agenda. Hopefully, I can count on one of your three votes. Check out Mike McLean for Town Council on Facebook if you want to see some of my writings. Thank you so much, Wakefield.
Thank you. Bob?
I would also like to thank WCAT gentlemen for your questions. And significantly, I do want to thank Jonathan, Mike, and Katie, because I wanted this to be a civil and congenial campaign, and it certainly was. What I'd like to do with my closing statement is talk about how I prepared to serve on town council after I decided to run in early February. To me, it was important to run an old-fashioned, self-funded, low-budget campaign. Throughout February and early March, I personally met or spoke with most of Wakefield's department heads and the chaired boards, committees, and commissions. I wanted to obtain a thorough understanding of their roles, responsibilities, issues, and needs. On social and print media, I wrote position papers on our zoning bylaws, the 2030 master plan, ARPA funds, and town meeting. On March 4th, I embarked on a journey with my wife Tracy to visit the home of 1,000 fellow Wakefield residents. I wanted to personally introduce myself, answer questions, and provide reasons why I want to be a member of the town council. I enjoyed many engaging conversations about a variety of town-related issues with hundreds of voters. I strive to provide an answer to any question posed to me. On April 14th, my wife and I visited our 1,000th home. As an aside, Katie was 998, Mike was 999, and Jonathan was 1,000. Time is our most valuable commodity. I am retired, and our two children are adults. Candidly, I have some caregiving responsibilities for Tracy and my parents, but rest assured, if elected, I will be able to devote considerable time every day towards serving Wakefield. I recognize that I will be one of seven people representing over 27,000 fellow residents if you elect me to town council. It will be my most significant professional challenge since I served as an appellate judge in the United States Navy. I stand ready to accept the serious responsibility of serving on the town council if you, the Wakefield residents, deem me worthy. I respectfully ask for your vote on Tuesday, April 26th. Thank you.
Katie?
Okay, so, thank you to everybody who made this debate possible, especially those at WCAT for letting me participate remotely. And I'd like to echo my fellow candidates' appreciation for this campaign, this, no matter what happens, April 26th, this has been a wonderful experience, and I appreciate getting to know everybody over these past several months. But in closing, a lot of you know me, I'm a lifelong Wakefield resident, I'm a young mom, I'm a homeowner, and it's important that our town council reflect a cross-section of our population. The young families here in Wakefield are an important piece of that puzzle, and I would like to help bring a voice to them at our town council table. That being said, as a town councillor, my primary job would be to represent all residents, no matter what their views or opinions were, and to feel that their voices were being heard and being brought to the table as their representative. I like to say that at night, I want to be able to go to bed and lay my head on the pillow and know that I did what was right over the course of the day, and that's all I need. I don't need accolades or congratulations, and that's how I would feel about being a town councillor. If I felt that I did my best to serve the people of Wakefield, then that's what's right. That would be what I would want. I am definitely passionate about Wakefield, I'm knowledgeable, and I'm very motivated. And you can be assured that if I was elected town councillor, I would work very, very hard to represent all of you and to keep open lines of communication with both the people in our government and also with our residents. I'd be very reachable and very accessible to all of you. So I humbly ask for your vote on April 26th. Please get out and vote, it is so, so important, and I hope that you'll consider me for one of your three votes.
Thank you. Well, that brings us to a conclusion to tonight's town council debate, if you will. I'd like to thank Mark and Bob for thoughtful and insightful questions, which made this a lively debate. I'd also like to thank WCAT. As usual, they do a first-class job. You know, I'm a big cheerleader of WCAT, and I got roped into being back on the board. It's your right and your responsibility as a citizen of Wakefield to get out and vote on April 26th. If you don't, you know, you're, you're letting down your fellow citizens, you're letting yourself down, and you really shouldn't have much to say if you're not out to vote. We will be having the election night coverage, as I point out, during the school committee debate. All of you are welcome, win, lose, or draw, you should come down. Because, as I've said in the past years, you know, it's interesting to find out not just, you know, what your positions are, but how the, how the campaign went, some interesting stories and that kind of stuff. And it's always a lot of fun, win, lose, and draw. So I hope to see all four of you on next Tuesday night down here. That coverage will be at 8:00 AM live on WCAT's governmental channel, that's Comcast 22, Verizon 42, RCN 13, on their Facebook channel, or by clicking on the "Watch Now" button on WCAT's website. Also, I'm going to throw in a little plug here for Town Meeting, which is on Monday, May 16th. Again, the purest form of democracy there is. You're the, the people who come to Town Meeting are the legislative body of this town on all major appropriations and laws, and it really is, again, another responsibility as a citizen of Wakefield to show up. So thanks again, and, and mostly, I forgot, but anybody who throws their hat in the ring to run for office should be admired. It's, it's public service, and it's worthwhile, and it's worthy of you, and I appreciate all of you guys running for it. I say on behalf of everybody in the town, as your town moderator, that we appreciate you guys running for this. So thanks again, and good night, and thanks again to WCAT.